With the time being six o'clock PM on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Two to five of the United States of America. And to three hundred and fifty. All of us, just to be one nation under God. It is simple with the Lord. Justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the October 11th, 2022 meeting. I'll entertain any discussion. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move second.
There's a motion in a second. Lori, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Adam Mottles?
Yes.
Member Madam. Number in that black?
Yes.
Number on the left?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is our update from our student representative. Good evening, Vicki.
Hi. So this week at school, it was Spirit Week, which was hosted by Student Council, and it was an overwhelming success. Monday was Pyjama Day, Tuesday was Twin Day, Wednesday was Pink Day in honor of breast cancer awareness, and Thursday was Tie-Dye Day, and then Friday was Class Color Day. And then on Friday, we had our annual pep rally that celebrated the fall sports and the senior athletes, and they were acknowledged before the pep rally started by being called out. And then throughout the pep rally, there were various games that the student body could participate in, and the seniors actually came in first place for the most class with the most school spirit, and then that was followed by the sophomores and then the faculty. And then our homecoming was on Saturday that was hosted in the gym, and it had an outstanding turnout. There was 106 people, and it was filled with a lot of dancing, food, and there was also games such as cornhole and ping pong there, which has never been happened in my time there. And then sports are starting to come to a close with various teams having senior nights and final games. Golf had their last match a couple of weeks ago, and both the girls and boys soccer had their senior nights last week, and girls actually finished this coming week. And at the football game on Friday, all the senior fall athletes were recognized and called out to the center of the field before the game started.
Excellent. It sounds like a good wrap-up to the season.
Definitely was.
How's everything else going?
It's good.
Great. Thank you for your updates. Any questions from the committee? No? Well, thank you, Vicki. I'll let you get to class.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Good evening, Dr. Goggin.
Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing tonight?
Very good, thanks.
Awesome. I want to just recognize my team that are here tonight to go through the report with me and to talk a little bit when we get to it about the district overview plan that we put together. So they're here for that. So feel free to jump in in any of my updates, team, because it's all about what the great things that you're doing in the buildings. So I'll start with personnel updates. We have hired Christina Cabrera, a kindergarten specialist over at Park Ave. We have hired Christopher Rumbaugh, a para at Bartlett High School. We have received the resignation from John Reardon, a math teacher at Webster Middle School. And I would like to announce that I have shared with the school committee and the staff that I've made a pretty difficult decision to resign for the purposes of my retirement and enter the next journey of my life. I have been with the district since 2017. I have never worked so hard in my life, given my blood, sweat, and tears, and I'm extremely proud of the work that we have accomplished over the years in terms of building strong foundations for students in the areas of academic growth, social, emotional. We've had lots of challenges thrown at us, COVID being one of them, and I truly believe that Webster shined and continues to shine, and I trust that all the good work will continue after I leave. I will be staying until March 3rd, and I did want to just make that announcement. In terms of instructional leadership, there's a lot that's been going on over the years and this year in particular. I'm really thrilled to share a little bit about what has been happening over with the innovation pathways over at Bartlett High School. And I know, Mr. Collins, you may share a little bit of this, and I'm not trying to take your thunder, so please jump in. I attended the Grade Eight Assembly where the Grade Eight students came over to Bartlett High School and got to learn about the innovation pathways in the marketing class. I want to say it was probably one of the best days of the year for me, watching our student leaders in each of the classes, the advanced manufacturing class and the biomedical class and the marketing class, with their different colored T-shirts, really leading the hands-on demonstrations in our cafeteria. And I want to give a shout-out to you, Mr. Collins, for really just getting that crowd's attention. I felt like I was in a game show, and Ms. Neves was right there tossing you the T-shirts to throw to the kids. Really wonderful day where the kids were truly engaged to learn a lot about Bartlett and what Bartlett has to offer. We've been really working towards that for many years to try to get them there early on in the year, so thank you for accomplishing that goal of ours. I want to let you know that we received the statewide system of support targeted assistant grant of $50,000, which we typically receive every year for the middle and the high school because of the scores that they have. We've been awarded $50,000 this year for the TAG grant. This funding will help support the $40,000 needed for the TNTP services for GLEAM. That is in addition to the free GLEAM that they give us, and the remaining $10,000 will be used for PBIS consultant work to do our work around building safe learning environments. I'd like to let everyone know that we are losing two of our SAWSS members, Joan Tuttle and Cheryl Rabbit. They're moving to other areas in the state, and I publicly want to thank them and the rest of the team for all of their work, especially last year. It was a pretty challenging year, but they really dug in with us and did a lot of work on things that are out of their realm, but they were right there with us, working on the Bartlett High School Program of Studies, attending all of our GLEAM meetings, really assisting with professional development and the learning walks where we could get them in when we had coverage. We thank them for that and wish them luck and on their new spots that they'll be assisting. But we will be welcoming two new members. Tim Connor will be joining us and has been joining us since the summer, and a new member named Jennifer. Scott, who we have not met yet, she's coming to us with experience as an assistant principal and experience working in a turnaround district, Fitchburg, to be exact. So she'll be working with us, and Tim will be working with us, and Lama will still be working with us. And they typically join us when our consultants come, which they are coming. The TNTP math consultants are coming tomorrow with our SAWSS team, and they'll be doing some walkthroughs and meeting and greeting people at the middle school and the high school. And on Thursday, our TNTP GLEAM consultants will be coming to do that same type of thing, walkthroughs, initial observations. And so that work that we're doing is really focused on building skills and strategies and conversations around student achievement data and how to help support teachers with understanding where students are at to get them to the next step. Again, another point of evidence of us trying to build distributive leaderships in the team, in the schools. I'm really happy that we were able to schedule our Zoom meeting with Old Sturbridge Village. Ms. Peterson and Mrs. Polyofico and myself met with a full team of Old Sturbridge Village, their educational team. Webster Days are going to continue there. We, as you know, as I've shared with you, received a donation to Old Sturbridge Village on our behalf from Webster Five. They doubled their donation, so we will be able to bring more kids. The dates for Webster Days have initially been scheduled for sometime in March, and they're really working now, early, to plan the events for the day, which will incorporate lots of hands-on learning and also some town meeting-style experiential learning for students that participate. Grades three, four, five, and eight will go. I'm hoping that Webster Day stays for years and years to come here. It's a nice partnership, and Sturbridge Village is right around the corner from us. I participated in the Commissioner of Education's conference call this past week, and it always strikes me that we're always in alignment with what is going on with the state. So the conversation with the superintendents had to do with COVID. It's not gone. But MCAS declines across the state, and really a strong focus on exactly what we're doing here, reading, literacy, and really looking closely at the curriculum, at the implementation, and what we're doing to close gaps. I'm sure all of you have heard NPR lately across the nation, the standardized test scores and the National Reading Report Card. The decline hasn't been like this in 20 years. So once again, I want to just point out that we are not alone. We are facing these challenges head-on, and I do believe that Webster is well-equipped with resources, not just materials, but people, to really service our kids well. And I remind everyone that MCAS is just one small measure of the great things that are happening in our district. I am sorry to inform you that Mrs. Barris and I received the notification that Webster is scheduled for the tiered focus monitoring Group B review for the 2023-24 year. We've been through many tiered focus monitoring reviews, and we know that they're very comprehensive. That will be happening next year. It's conducted every three years. And in anticipation of what's going to happen, even though I won't be here, I am going to publicly thank Michelle Budney because she is the master at organizing the data for this district and does an incredible job at project managing. And I want to thank her in advance, and we haven't told her yet, so maybe we'll tell her together tomorrow that it's coming. I also want to let you know that the IDA requires states to measure whether students from certain racial and ethnic groups are disproportionately receiving special education services in specific disability categories, whether they are disproportionately placed in certain settings, and whether they are disproportionately receiving certain kinds of disciplinary removals. Mrs. Barris and I are very happy to announce that Webster has not been flagged, identified or at risk for significantly disproportionality in special education. Any questions before I move on to management and operations or any comments from my team? Okay. Management and operations, I do want to let you know that I attended the CMC Board Meeting on October 13th, and on October 17th, we had a special meeting. We have currently 11 students attending the various programs there. I was in awe at some of the career and technical things that are taking speed in their programs. They have a new person who is really working on that career-to-college connection for students at CMC, and some great things are happening there. I attended the SWECC meeting on October 20th. We currently have eight students attending the various programs. A big topic at our conversation at the SWECC meeting this past month was the announcement that the Operational Service Division of Administration and Finance is recommending an increase in special education private tuition to be 14% by FY '24. So it's not finalized yet. I will take the actions of sending letters to our legislators to make them aware, along with the rest of the superintendents in the state and the business managers. That's quite a frightening amount of increase, so I do want to put that out there. In terms of other management and operations updates, we're our district leadership team meeting, we meet in here as a grand team. We've met here for, I think, probably two and a half hours on October 20th to really dig into some of the feedback that the school committee gave us on the district strategic plan, to go over the FY '24 budget process. We will be meeting with our principals individually next Tuesday to really have those one-on-one conversations. We do a lot of discussion and talking about instructional leadership, professional development, and I'm pleased to let you know that the Educator Handbook training occurred today in this room for this wonderful team. That is the system that we purchased to really streamline the collection and analysis of incident data. So we're hoping that that's going to be rolled out mid-November. We'll keep you posted on that. In terms of the Bartlett renovation, I'm not going to say a lot, but I will let you know that there have been a series of meetings that we've been participating in with our designers, our architects, our OPMs, and furniture fixture consultant. We had a modular discussion on October 18th at 1:00. As I had previously shared, Mr. Collins, Monique, and I really sat down to phase the modulators in the construction, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. It's very, very complex when you look at the movement and start to prioritize on who should go in a modular and who should stay in the building. By all accounts, it looks like we're going to need at least 14 classrooms in our modulators, but this is a work in progress, so don't hold me to that. We also then had meetings with our PE, art, band, and music, and word languages to really give them that broad overview and collect their feedback on design. And then we went into a school committee, a school building committee meeting, all on the same day, and Monique's going to share a little bit more about that in her report. In terms of family and community engagement, there's a lot of great things that have been happening in the schools. Mrs. Neves, our family liaison, organized and led the Hispanic Heritage Movie over at Webster Middle School on October 20th. 25 students attended with about two parents. She said it was a great success. She's in the process of organizing another movie night for Park Avenue. The date has not been released yet. You also had the PTO Bingo Night on that same night, which was led by our PTO, and we're really proud of all the work that they're doing. I know the homecoming events are going to be covered a little bit more, maybe by Mr. Collins, and Victoria shared that with us. In looking ahead, we have our National Junior Honor Society Ceremony at Webster Middle School on Thursday at 6:00. And really excited about Friday. We're taking a team of district leaders and community members to a DESI workshop titled "Better Together: Strengthening Family Connections." And there are a series of workshops that each of us got to pick. They're very different, and everyone's going to go off into their different ways, and we're going to come back as a group and really start to outline next steps with family engagement and thinking about other ways to get our families involved. In other updates, I attended the town meeting along with some of you, and it was it was a good meeting. Monique and I will be attending some more Bartlett High School renovation meetings tomorrow onsite at the fire and the police station with our OPM and our designer. And just to give you a forecast of the future, the needs assessment data has been requested by the school committee, I think Sheila, and on November 22nd, the PBIS teams from each of the buildings are going to come and help present the needs assessment and what's going on in each of the buildings so that you can get a feel for the action steps that are being taken across the district. And then looking forward, Kathy, to address your request, the iReady data for the winter is really a baseline data. We will be presenting, when I say we, the academic coaches and the building leadership teams, will be presenting on February 14th, and I apologize to them because it's February 14th, but we don't do the winter assessment until January, and so we'll be presenting the comparison data between the iReady winter and fall on that date.
Maybe they can bring their dates.
I don't think they'll want to, and I won't let them do that. I'll protect them for that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Goggin.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Ms. Navarro.
Dr. Goggin, I just want to congratulate you on your retirement and thank you for your years of truly dedicated service and the changes that you've made, and I definitely hope that they will be sustained, so.
Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Dr. Goggin, I, too, would like to thank you for your dedication to this district, whether it was leading us through COVID. Your leadership and your vision was instrumental in getting us through that very, very difficult period in a way that many districts didn't pull through. And, you know, beyond that, you've worked tirelessly to bring alignment to our curriculum, to bring new opportunities to our students, different funding streams, community relationships, and all of that has really enhanced the lives and the educational experiences for our kids. So thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is the Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you. First item on the agenda, I have the Building Committee update. We held the Building Committee on October 25th. No, I'm sorry. Had it on October 18th. It was kind of an interesting meeting because we had our first round of cost estimates, and all that information has just come in. So the OPM and the architect were digesting that information themselves. We are getting ready for our first submittal of our design development on the 18th. Building Committee's scheduled another meeting first just to review the initial cost estimates. I'm looking back at this project in January. Building 5%. Like they are seeing across the state. Items higher. So at that meeting, we didn't have a lot of detail to go into because they were just digesting all the information. What they're going to do is take it back, take a look at it, come up with value engineering and renovation. And this is the first submittal. We have more that are going to be. Project, we're hoping. Dark. And we'll work through. There will be another Building Committee on November 1st to review all the financial part development. Dr. Goggin said we've been. We have three meetings here tomorrow. Actually, three meetings tomorrow, one here and two downtown. We have technology. Designer and the. Fire department. All initial meetings. Okay. There'll be multiple. First one had a real idea of terms, whole through building. We're, you know, proactive policy. Next item, I have maintenance update. Fortunately, I have nothing new to report there. Everything is maintaining. The boilers are running, are operational, and any other issues pop up. So that's my favorite report for today. Next item I have is the FY '22 end-of-year report. In your packet, you have a copy of the FY '22 report. It was submitted on Monday. I want departments. Station, town departments are all there. Little bit of work, but it's always something that I enjoy doing and putting together because it does tell a story about the district. I always recommend to people if it's, you know, you don't really need to go through the whole. Last eight of reports. That really gives an analysis of the last three year expenditure revenues throughout the district. And also, there were some ups and downs this year in the reports. Usually because of COVID, grant funding, notice some of the expenditures might have been a little off, but that's due to COVID. Don't know if there's any questions about the end-of-year report. Seen that, so. I'll sit down and just put it there. Happy to see. Any questions? Okay. And then the last item I have for you in your packet is also an outline of all of our FY '22 grants. As you can see, it has been a big job to manage all these grants, and there are many of them. Over COVID, they've extended the grants. They like to carry through additional years. Spending in federal money that was coming in, we're dealing with three years in one year. The way I outline the grants is it started with FY '22 grants, and it went all the way through FY '22. Status is whether they are continuing to be open, if they're officially closed. Impending means that we're waiting for a final input to come in, backdoor of some materials, waiting for that. The next column is the. Last column is if remaining bound. We have the FY '22s. Most of them are allowed to be over. There are a couple of grants that were closed and are one-year grants, like the entry grant, elder education, the one-year. Because money left over, that has. No questions?
Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli, for your updates. The next item on the agenda is the Principal Report. Joining us tonight is Mr. Collins from Bartlett High School. Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all tonight?
Good, and you?
Good. Thank you so much. We will get started with speaking about our attendance data in terms of where we are here at almost the end of our first quarter and constantly monitoring attendance data and tardy data as we work toward our main goal of academic growth and gains. We monitor attendance quite frequently. And so, as you'll see, and these are just very brief notes that we use in a Google Doc where we keep track of some of the data. Into our previous school year, excuse me, we noticed that there was an increase in student attendance consecutive days this year by roughly maybe 10% to 15%. So with that, we looked at the previous Bartlett Plan of three-day, five-day, and 10-day letters and working with an idea that we would monitor students more closely with documented wraparound services. Previous in the plan, guidance and student services were not directed and/or there was not a documented plan in terms of how they would follow up with students on a regular basis. So in our new plan, students will be identified on a third non-consecutive day of attendance so that we can go ahead and start documenting with our parents that we noticed that a child has missed up to three days of school. So that's different than just looking at consecutive days. That's also monitoring students that are having attendance issues outside of a non-consecutive pattern. So students, once they're identified on a third consecutive day, we have started parent phone calls and reaching out to them in terms of what our guidance department and/or our wraparound services, the nurse, social worker, psychologist, things like that, if they're needed. And then, of course, utilizing the days, letters that we always use, except for increasing that frequency, five days, eight days, and then in 10 days, following up with home visits and then that wraparound services in terms of plans of support and how we can help kids get to school. Day 10 to 15, of course, we know that we have attendance violators, that Power School, we do drop them out of Power School at that point, but all of this is in our hopes to avoid that. So we are starting very early, and we will continue to monitor attendance data regularly. In addition to our attendance data. In addition to our attendance data, we did bring you some information on our tardies. As you heard, I believe, the first time we presented here this year about our goal to decrease the tardies. In coming to work at Bartlett, there were over 8,000 tardies in one school year. And so, we have implemented a lockout policy that does not allow for students to consecutively miss class because of tardies because we do have intervention supports in place that help them to get there. So, we chose the one with the most tardies before just to report to you today, and that is our first-period tardies. If you'll look there, the tardies are very low in comparison to the previous years in '21, '22 in terms of students being to school on time and in class on time. So, we saw pretty, pretty large gains there in terms of getting students to class on time. And we have not noticed consecutive trends with students missing once they are at school. They are pretty much aware of the three-minute policy, and we do not have a high level of repeat offenders, I should say, in our lockout for skipping and/or tardies. So, so far, so good with our attendance data and our tardy data. Also, we added here on the last page, you'll notice with data that was requested by the school committee. Dress code, we are limited, we only have eight incidents of dress code issues and violations this school year, and this was after language was changed to match the approved middle school language prior to the start of school. And we've only had one incident of assault and one incident of a fight. And the unauthorized cell phone use policy has got 152 write-ups with no incidents. So, it is teacher write-ups in terms of conversation-based with no incidents, no issues of not giving the phone up that resulted into referrals where we might have to remove a student from school. So, we have had zero issues in terms of those matters as previously discussed at our first time together here. Any questions on that data?
To the chair. Just addressing the tardies. One of our meetings about the lockout policy. Can you just go into detail of how that works? Who's ultimately making the decision of when the student is deemed late, how they're getting to this room, I guess, that they're congregating in after as?
So, I, I, maybe I don't follow your question. How, who determines if they're late?
So, is it, you're five seconds late, the door is closed, now who's escorting that student to another room? And what is happening in that room where all the tardy students are at?
So, that is where we do interventions as to why you're tardy, why maybe you are not able to get there within the three-minute time period. We're a school right under 400 kids. It's pretty easy to navigate through the hallways. So, it gives us an opportunity to conference with the student, reset that behavior as to why you're not there. For example, we have some students who congregate in the hallways, maybe talk, maybe they're not moving at the pace that they should to get there. So, it allows us to intervene and have a dialogue with those students, then document and call the parent so that we don't make it a habit to miss class every day and to be late. Because again, the tardies were over 8,000 in one year, and that was periods one through seven. So, we are trying to eliminate those. The indicator of being late is the three-minute bell. So, we have a three-minute bell in between every class. In the morning time, when a parent comes in, if a parent documents we were stuck in traffic, a parent brings their child in, they are not considered late. We are able to let them go to class. But during the school day, if a student is not excused from a teacher's classroom or something like that, and they're just hanging in the hall, there is a consequence for being late to class. And so, that three-minute transition is over at that time. So, teachers are directed to close their door and begin bell-to-bell instruction. Quality bell-to-bell instruction is our goal. So, without interruptions. So, that would be five, 10 kids coming in late. So, that's what we've eliminated. And then those students do go to our journey program, which is a reset restorative process. It's not punitive. And we discuss what being late is like, real-life examples of what it is like, you can't be late to work. We go over all of that. It's been very helpful. And again, our trends are, have lessened, and we will not have that many tardies this year.
Thank you.
To the chair.
Ms. Napparatta.
I think that it's great to share this data out this way and just looking at the tardies. When you come next, if you can continue to provide that data, that would be good specifically looking at this school year's data to make sure that that trend, as is your goal.
Oh, sure.
Continues to be down. I think having my daughter not at the school has probably helped your data a lot. And I should probably know the answer to this question, but what is the difference between truant and absent?
So, truant is we have not heard from any guardian or parent. And if I call in to let you know that my, that my child is going to be absent, then they'll go in under a different code.
Okay.
Truant codes do not stay if a parent calls. So, for example, we had a parent that called today because yesterday they had a death in the family. No one stopped to even think to call. So, it goes in there and it is immediately changed. So, once we receive communication, so back to the idea of revamping our attendance policy, we never want to get to where we're dropping a student because they're an attendance violator. So, we wanted to intervene early on. But most times, we don't have issues with getting in touch with parents, even if in, God forbid, situations like the one I just mentioned, someone's going to reach out before that anyway, and then we're able to go in. And then, of course, in that case, we're able to offer wraparound services with counseling supports and things like that to put into place because we know that, you know, there's family members of this kid at the other schools. So, it allows us to have a conversation and what does the family need? So, yeah, so it's not our goal to leave truant in there. We really don't want to do that, but, you know, legally speaking with Power School, that is a code in there, but we monitor those daily.
Okay. I have just a couple more questions. So, looking at the way the data is presented, both on the graph and just in the chart, it looks as though there are fewer absences. So, I'm just, I'm wondering about this wording. With school in session almost one quarter, we have noticed an increase in student absences on a consecutive basis.
Yeah. So, we had 29 students a year ago at almost quarter one and 44 students at almost quarter one this school year that have consecutive absences of three days or more. So, while the absences are down in terms of by period, daily attendance shows us that there are more students at this time that are missing more.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, it does appear that way, and that's why we kind of mapped it out, and that's why I said I wanted to share our notes because that's what prompted us to, you know, look at our intervention process, so to speak, and involve the counselors and really have a detailed step-by-step process for what we're going to do to help these families in getting students in school and not out consecutively. As Dr. Gogan mentioned, COVID is not gone completely, so we have had lots of students miss consecutive days. And 44 students is a lot in quarter one to have multiple occurrences. So, that's what prompted that. But in terms of attendance, yes, we are ahead of the game as a whole, period by period. But.
Thank you for that clarification.
For sure. And thank you for asking that.
Action plan. And this is my final question. Can you explain what you, what you mean when you say drop out of Power School?
So.
Are they dropped?
So, they're dropped out of Power School once they're?
Are they dropped out of enrollment?
They are dropped out of enrollment, yes. That's a, that happens at the beginning of the year. If there's, if there's no-show students, they do drop out.
Under age 16?
I believe so. That is the, that's how it was in my former district as well, but that happened in the beginning of the year for no students that did not show.
It is for the over 16-year-olds.
Okay.
Yeah. Other, before that, it's DCF or it's ACRA or it's, there's other things in place because we can't just drop a student because they haven't come to school. And I don't, that's different than Mass to, to the Carolinas, so.
So, excuse me for that. But in terms of students that did not show at the beginning, the age did not matter. If a student was not here or not going to attend Bartlett, they were dropped. So, after, they would not be dropped. Excuse me. So, I correct myself.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
I have a comment.
Dr. Gogan?
I have a comment. I just want to say publicly that anytime I walk through the Bartlett High School this year, there's a different sense of order, calmness, and responsibility that you can actually feel with the students. There's not this chaotic feeling even when the bell rings and the students are moving from the class to class. There's a, I, what I see is a noticed level of maturity in the students with these structures. So, and I know that I've spoken to many teachers and they are quite pleased that they can start their class on time and that there's follow-up and not just on the attendance issues, but on many other issues. So, I just want to publicly thank the entire Bartlett High School staff for rolling out some new expectations and really sticking to them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a couple of questions, and this is just, you know, from my own understanding. The chart that has the absences and the tardies that looks like this. Absences, yeah, absences and truant, I think. There's a really tall blue line for truant, like it looks like maybe around the 50 mark. I'm, the bottom, I'm assuming is dates, right? And then the, is that instances? It just seems like a weird spike there.
I know.
Oh, really? Oh, so it's unexcused absences before a long weekend? Gotcha. It could have been a half-day. Yeah. That makes sense. Yeah. Okay.
And that's daily. Those are randaily.
Yep. Thank you for that. And then just the other question, I really, this documentation of attendance, this updated plan here is great. What, do we follow the same type of thing if people are, students are, for example, out for eight days, but they're not consecutive? Because you talked a little bit about addressing those non-consecutive absences that are trying to.
Yeah. So, if we jump on non-consecutive right away, so that is a follow-up by teacher by teacher, and we've not had any instances where it's been an issue, but we will if we see a trend more than that. But we haven't had very many. Actually, I wrote down, we only have three students total in the whole school that have had non-consecutive issues.
That's great. Lots of, lots of progress there. Yeah, all around. Good deal. Any other questions or comments from anyone? Well, thank you for this, the turnaround and also the, the data that supports what, what everyone is observing in the building. Appreciate it. Did you have anything else in your, in your report, Mr. Collins?
Yeah. Just to capitalize a little bit, the, the best things, I guess, to last, the most fun, right? As Victoria said this evening, homecoming week was amazing. The kids had an amazing time. Also, if you look at data, there were more tickets sold to the dance than in years previous, of course, coming off of COVID, we know. So, it was very nice. I unfortunately had a death in the family back home, and so I, I had to miss the end of the week. But I was very sad to not spend it with them. Ms. Nieves slept here all weekend as she let me know several times. And it was such a great thing to keep up with them via FaceTime and at the dance and pictures and, you know, just checking in with them. So, it was really exciting to, to watch their excitement all week. So, I think as Victoria said, there were many fun events, but we really have been working to lift up student involvement and to lift up staff involvement. And a lot of that is a goal to lift up community involvement, to really get folks to buy back in to what Bartlett has to offer. And some of that, you know, Dr. Gogan shared with you briefly about our pitch at keeping students at Bartlett and not going to Bay Path. So, we did present our pathways and what we have to offer in terms of that. So, it's more than just homecoming events, but it is academic events as well that we are pushing to get students involved. And if I have to do a game show every day, then I have to do a game show every day because we want them to stay as engaged and as involved as we can. So, we welcome, you know, I know there's many people watching now. We welcome the community to be involved and get your kids here, get yourselves here. We want to see those faces at Bartlett.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Did you want to talk about common planning time, or did we cover that somewhere else?
Yes. Thank you for, I didn't even look down. So, as I said before I started this report, all of these, these interventions in terms of attendance and tardies is so that we can reach the ultimate goal of turning around our, our student growth and our gains. Some of that is our common planning time. Now, having a coach in place, which you all will be able to see the three coaches at the schools present data and how they are using it. We are, we are jumping right in to what structured CPT time looks like for teachers and really starting those data conversations around where students are, what the goals look like, and how teachers desegregate data so that they know how to get the student to the next level. So, that comes with curriculum mapping, really, laying the, laying the curriculum and the state standards out for the entire year, mapping out where we need to go and what, what students need in terms of targeted individualized instruction. So, we are really working on that, and it is new, and it is something that I will want to share with you all year throughout, as Ms. Napparatta said, with the other data. This will be something I'm really excited to hear about in February, even though it's February 14th on Valentine's Day, but that's okay. Hopefully, we'll have lots of love to present around data that we don't have today because people don't love data so much all the time. But this is, this is something that's important to us as stakeholders at Bartlett to really look at what student gains look like. So, our first step in that is really a structured CPT. And our coaches, I'm sure I speak for my colleague from the elementary, my colleague from the middle school, having those coaches on board are really helpful to structure what that CPT time looks like so that we can really monitor data and to teach teachers how to use data appropriately. So, that's really what we're looking at. So, I'm excited to be able to present that out in the months to come as well because I think that's something that we're watching heavily. So, thank you all. And sorry, I forgot.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Go back down to my notes.
We love data, so you're talking to the right group here.
Well, there we go.
Excellent. Well, thank you for your updates, Mr. Collins.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Ms. Chapdally?
Hi. I just wanted to mention, I'm not sure if we talked about STEM Week, but I know the superintendent talked about the day that we had the kids over from eighth grade at the high school, and Mr. Collins mentioned that as well, and that was a very exciting day. But that was followed up with a visit in the Boston area with kids who are in the innovation pathways. We had four teams. Three of them were in the advanced manufacturing, and then our newest innovation pathway, which is the biomedical pathway, we had a team. And they won. They came in third place. They were coveted first, second, and third prizes. And then there were a lot of, you know, other areas you could win, but everyone was shooting for either first, second, or third, and we came in third place. And I've been getting emails left and right. Bartlett is on the map. The kids, you could have just felt the joy. I had goosebumps, you know, just going to collect the, the award with the kids. And then it came with more. It came with 100-hour internship paid for these students. I mean, the joy was just palpable.
That's amazing.
So, I mean, we've, we've come far with our pathways.
Yeah. That's amazing.
We're just starting.
That's right. Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda, under old business, is the approval of the 2022 to 2023 district strategic plan. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. We're going to use some visuals with this presentation to help us discuss it. I know that you saw this plan at the last meeting and you gave us some feedback to put some measurable goals in here. Everything in bold has been updated. The central office team met for several hours to work on this, and then the district leadership team met for several hours. I just want to give some context to the district strategic plan. It's really stepping off of our instructional strategies plan that we've had for years. This plan is in alignment with our TAD grants, and we have put everything under the instructional priority of sense of belonging and really looking at building things from the classroom out. And I think it's working. I think this strategy of kind of clear language and putting things in four buckets is going to help everyone across the district meet different types of goals in a strategic manner. This district goal is meant to be overarching and something that the schools then take back and build their school improvement plans from. So, I need my glasses. I'm not going to read all of this to you, but if, you can scroll down a little bit. Mo, can you make that a little bigger? Again, there's the four buckets. If we can just put this on the screen for a sec. If we can just put this on the screen for a sec. Yep, right here. The four buckets of creating safe learning environments, having students doing the majority of the thinking, celebrating diversity, on-way, two-way communication. This plan was not built in isolation. It was built with the feedback from the district leadership team with the SaaS team this summer, with the ILTs. A parent survey went out and I had shared that with you that we didn't receive a lot of feedback and then it went out again. And we have received a total of 70 responses. And I just want to read some highlights that parents said on these four buckets. In terms of students doing the majority of the thinking, one parent wrote, "Like adults, kids want choices." Giving them opportunities to decide what they need to help them learn means that kids will feel like they matter and that leads to more effort put into learning from them. In terms of the safe learning environments, a parent, one comment that I wanted to share is that one parent said, "Clear and consistent expectations are important and they help if kids abide by them." I agree with this completely, that every student should always feel safe and supported at school. In terms of our third bucket of celebration of diversity, one parent wrote, "Our schools are very diverse and I'm very glad to see that each flyer and email is often sent in many different languages. Celebrating diversity and experience other cultures in the classrooms is a way to stop racism and bigotry. Kids are taught to hate and when confused by something new, they, they may act it out. But if they're taught about different cultures in a safe and secure environment without hate, it is a start to ending systemic racism for the next generation when they are in the position to make changes as adults." In terms of our two-way communication with families, one family wrote, "This makes me feel much better, especially where one of my students has anxiety. I need that two-way communication. The communication with class dojo with my child's teacher has been incredible. I love knowing what's going on in the classroom." Part of our submission for our TAD grant requires us to collect feedback from families. This survey was one measure of collecting feedback and coincidentally fell in alignment with what we're trying to do here. The feedback that you gave us at the last meeting was great to put those measurable, some measurable context into this plan and you're going to see some of the changes as we scroll along. It might be simpler if I just go to the last page where you can really see what our, our outcomes are going to be. And again, everything that's highlighted in here is something that we added to to give some more clarity on these objectives, if you go all the way to the last page. We, you know, expect, and I think as we're seeing, creating safe learning environments in all classrooms and establishing clear and consistent expectations, we anticipate that we're going to see decreased incidence of discipline. We will be able to show you through the educator data, the educator handbook that the staff was just trained on today, we'll be able to pull that data with a level of consistency so that we can periodically bring that to the school committee. Attendance data, when it's being monitored, it's valid. And so as Mr. Collins and his team just demonstrated, taking a different approach to monitoring attendance will show improvements and we can continue to share that data. It is our hope that graduation rates increase. We will be able to show that through the specific reports that Desi provides us. The dropout rates, we want them to decrease. I, I can guarantee you that if we're not just sending letters at home and there's more of a wraparound service with the students at the high school, as we've heard tonight, the staff will be fighting to not have the dropouts. We also have a nice bridge that we've developed with our adult education program and some of our students who do not want to get their high school diploma are walking right into the adult education program for their GED. So there's wraparound services. We'll be able to share that data. We hope that to do culture and climate surveys, I know the schools are already doing some of this in terms of measuring how students and families feel about their sense of belonging. And we plan to bring the beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year survey results to you. In addition, I think, as was stated at the last time, 100% of students surveyed is our goal, that they can determine at least one trusted adult in each of their schools. My hope is that there's more than one for every student, but those are our goals in that first bucket. In terms of the second bucket with students doing the majority of the thinking and having access to as-needed scaffolds to support their academic success with on or grade, above-grade level standards, we anticipate seeing achievement rates improve through multiple measures, not just I-Ready or MCAS, but through access, through grades, through looking at the assessments that teachers are using to determine whether or not students are actually absorbing the information that they're teaching. We hope to see that there's a decrease in the achievement gaps for targeted subgroups. As you know, Desi watches what happens with subgroups, as I reported tonight, special education, L-group, different subgroups. We want to see that all students are growing. And we also want to look specifically at every student to see what their student growth percentiles are. By the end of the year, 100% of the teaching staff will be evaluated and our goal is to have at least 85% of the teaching staff demonstrating evidence of strategies in their classrooms that promote students doing the majority of the thinking. We'd like to measure mid-year and end-of-the-year evaluation data. And we also have, I put in your packet, these culturally responsive look-fours to really make it easy for teachers to see ways to provide strategies in the classrooms. What will the teacher do versus what the student will do? These are provided by Desi and they will help not only with students doing the majority of the thinking, but it will also bleed into the next bucket of the celebration of diversity. And our measurable outcomes for the celebration of diversity and accompanied by culturally responsive instructional practices are again tied to these culturally responsive look-fours, which will be used throughout walks with, whether that's TNTP, your academic coaches, ILTs. Again, the same measurements of improved student success, whether that's attendance, achievement rates, feeling valued and respected. And we will be looking and collecting the walkthrough observational data that is not used in an evaluative way. These are walkthroughs that our consultants are building and using with our academic coaches currently right now in the schools. They're giving teachers, this is what we're hoping to see in classrooms and then reporting back out without names. Okay, we have a pattern of seeing SEI strategies in 80% of the walks that we went through today. So immediate feedback is going to teachers. The ILT teams and the academic coaches are meeting and supporting each other on practices that are proven to be effective to increase student achievement rates. And then our last bucket, it is our hope that the measurable goals will be increased family attendance at school events. That will, data will be gathered through sign-in sheets and information on increased events. We know that research tells us when families are really concerned about and involved in education, students put forth more energy. So we're really going to be tracking, making sure that parents feel welcome and trying to get them into the school. We know that contractually, our teachers are obligated to attend open house, parent-teacher conferences, and one more additional contractual night. We also know that we have ample stipends and we know that we are encouraging every school to have at least two more family events, two or more, and I can guarantee you there probably will be more, where small groups of teachers are running and attending a variety of family events at the schools, such as the Hispanic Heritage Celebration Night. So we'll be tracking that data and, of course, compensating any small groups of teachers who attend with funds to do that. So these are the measurable outcomes that we put in here. And if you go backwards and look at it, you'll see that anything bolded is where we put some more clarity into the goals. And again, I think this is, this is really, the purpose of this is to, to have a pathway for the schools to build their school improvement plans. And this pathway will provide a level of cohesiveness between the schools. They may be working on things differently at one school, developmentally at another school, but all of these four buckets will bring the district closer and closer to accomplishing our tasks. And our team, my team is here. So this, this was built with everybody. And any comments, please jump in.
I can jump in, I guess. I'll start. I just want to say that, you know, I think the process for this was a really well-done process in that we, you know, we started this all during, I guess, like late spring, early summer. It started with that conference that, that you attended for the, the district leadership with Dr. Mackay. And, you know, I think when you came back from that and there was a lot of, like, really great energy around how we were going to take a look at organizing ourselves as an administration and a leadership team. And we started talking about the different areas or objectives that you could choose and, you know, we ended up settling with the sense of belonging. And I think, you know, there was a lot of great discussion around that and why that is so important and how it touches on everything that we do that in order for us to reach kids and see them be successful, they have to have a connection and a, you know, a real true sense that they are, you know, part of the school community and they are the school community, really. So I think, you know, that was, I think, a great exercise in terms of how we're, you know, really kind of driving this and everything we do. Like, we, we talk about it every time we get together and I know that I've been talking about it with the staff that report to me in terms of their own goals, like, and refocusing. It's not just about data. How are you going to bring that component of self, sense of belonging into what we do every day? Whether it's through the special education world or academics support and, you know, through our curriculum. So I, for one, you know, I just really liked how we pursued this and had so many people involved in the conversations and kept coming back to it. So, you know, I'm looking forward to it.
I will add that at Bartlett, we jumped right in with a focus on one and three, having been in place in the hearts of educators everywhere in terms of, you know, loving on our students, really capitalizing on where they've been, what their story and what their journey looks like, but what their future looks like based upon that and how we rewrite the narrative. Our big work has been jumping into buckets two and four because communication and ongoing communication is so important in the learning process in terms of how we engage stakeholders. And then, of course, jumping back there to number two, that's a big shift for, for educators to really put the onus on students sometimes because as teachers, it is a level of control because we worry when we're not doing, are we, did we say too much? Did we not say enough? Did this lesson not go well? And as education has evolved over the years, that is really what that research-based, those research-based strategies as listed above there tell you to do is that productive struggle is real. It is real for students to do that. We do it at the kitchen tables every night with our, with our families, right? When they come home. And so that's what we're doing in the classroom and that's been a big thing. So at Bartlett, we really kind of capitalized on one and three because we know in the hearts of educators, they're doing that work and we're just reminding them that, of what the shift looks like and what the understanding looks like with kids and to revisit it, if you will, and then to really jump into levels two and four, but to not ever stop to forget in any sense of the word, to forget that all four buckets go together. So when you visit at Bartlett, you will see we have those four buckets that are in our planning room as we did that with the, with the teachers and they all touched upon each bucket and they got to add to those buckets of what their own sense of belonging looked like and what their work in terms of what the student lift versus the teacher lift looks like. And we keep those buckets in our planning room at all times and the teachers refer back to that. We were in there with our ILT today and we add to it. We talk about them. So this work, for me, being a first-year leader here at Bartlett is important because I have to come back to the, the jumping point, as I like to say, from the jump. So for me, it's important to always revisit this with my leaders in terms of department chairs and ILT leads because this work is so important as we move forward.
I guess I'm talking next. So just, I also, obviously being new this year, very new, really jumped on these with my staff in our opening days. And we took a look at these deeply to look at the things that are already happening in the district and at Park Ave that we feel are benefiting students and really useful and tie into our strategic plan and what things do we need to add to support further. So we had lots of these charts up around and all staff had a voice in adding to the pieces at Park Ave that, that are working, things that maybe we should take a second look at and improve that would land in these buckets. So I know that the staff, especially at an elementary school, sense of belonging is, is really important, that two-way family communication where the parents are very often the voice for their children is really strong. So I think there are a lot of great things happening at PAE to capitalize on there. And then when you look at, at bucket two, looking for places where we can really grow, looking at those culturally responsive look-fours, I think if you take time and look through those in your document, you're going to see it touches on the high expectations. It touches on, you know, making sure all students are represented, what it looks like in a literacy class, what it looks like in a math class and really being able to have those tangible, what is this teacher doing? What is the student doing? So when we're walking through those classrooms, both as administrators and peers, as we get to our, our shared walkthroughs, being able to really put some data to what does that mean is going to be really helpful to guide our continual professional development throughout this year and moving forward because sense of belonging is, is here to stay. It will shift and change, but sense of belonging is going to always be an important aspect of all schools.
I would just like to add that to get to this point, and I probably should have said it at the beginning, that the focus has been building our foundation and, and our structure and getting in all the resources and the high-quality resources that we need to be able to get to this point to have these discussions and to give us the tools for assessment benchmarks and, and materials where, where they can walk in a classroom and see high quality and that was something that we focused on day one. I always say, curriculum was always one of the first things to cut because it's bulk. But that was prioritized and that has been prioritized over the past four or five years, which is getting us to have these conversations because we have the tools. So thank you for that. I'm excited to be, to sit here and listen to our leadership about what's going on in the building. about what's going on in the building. It just makes me smile when I see this. This is why we show up every day. Or we don't. I appreciate it.
If I can.
I just wanted to add, over at the middle school, it's given us an opportunity to break down each one even further, but to share it out to the new staff that came on. And you could see how they shifted in their teaching and their learning as well, which was really powerful, you know, because we got to break everything down and, and to talk about it and to look at each piece and figure out what we're doing right and where we can grow and where we can continue for the kids to grow. And the things that these teachers have come up with to put on the docket for the students to, to grow from is going to be amazing because some of the things that are going to be coming out, I mean, they're doing like a Fear Factor thing and a museum and they're doing their surgery and things like that. And to go with the, all of their curriculum-based, but putting it on the students to learn about and to be curators and things like that. So I'm really excited to see what they're bringing and how well they got all the new teachers on board as well.
Oh, not at all. I was just going to say that, you know, you look at this picture and, and it looks pretty concise and pretty clear, but the hours that it took even just to do the instructional priority. I remember the afternoon we started working on that. I think some people kind of had this idea that let's just collaborate together and figure this out. And what I love about the instructional priority is it focuses on the sense of belonging, but it also focuses on on or above grade level learning, which is so critical for our kids in order to be able to move forward for college, to be college and career-ready and everything, but to offer appropriate scaffolds as needed. So not over-scaffolding, but not under-scaffolding, making sure kids have the scaffolds they need. But just that one sentence, I want to say it took days to come up with that. And it was, that was very collaborative. And also just the sense of belonging, just the different pieces. It gives everyone sort of a common purpose. So when you walk through the buildings, you can feel, you see the posters that are up. It's all focused on these four buckets. And I just think it's probably helping the buildings quite a bit. And like you said, new teachers as well, who are new to the district. But there's a lot of buzz around these, these strategic objectives.
Any other comments?
I have a question. Under the initiatives, it mentions an educator handbook to track discipline and behavior. Could you just explain what that looks like and how it's going to be used?
The educator handbook is the new data discipline system that we just purchased, that the administrative team was just trained on. We, we had an issue last year collecting discipline data. Everyone was collecting it a little differently and using Power School a little differently. We initially were going to go with using Swiss data that folds into P B I S, but the educator handbook can fit right into Power School and it streamlines, streamlines the collection of data and produces reports for us. So that data system has to be consistent at each of the schools if we're really going to have conversations about are our schools safe learning environments and what's going on. So they did participate in the training today. We're hoping to roll that educator handbook system out with fidelity by the end of November. And that, you know, is something new for us. Go ahead.
So educator's handbook was rolled out today at the high school with our leaders, our I L T department chair leaders. So we are Ms. Neves and myself, the guinea pigs today. I have used it in my previous district. So I am well-aware how it works in terms of the training and for training purposes. But we have given it access today to eight teachers. So we know that eight teachers now have access and we will operate one to two weeks with them where they're going to be using it to document minor infractions with kids, phone calls to parents, and then major infractions if there are any. Let's hope that there are not. But if there are, we would put them there. And we're going to process that accordingly before it is rolled out, as Dr. Gogan said, with a level of fidelity at all three schoolhouses. So we're excited. So we were able to kind of play with it today with our staff after we trained. And then we're going to roll it out as a large group and community with the other two principals next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to say that, you know, it's clear that not only was a lot of work put into this plan originally, but, you know, the, the methods of gathering data and measuring the outcomes are, are much clearer. So I would just like to thank you for, you know, taking the feedback and really incorporating it into something that, that we can go to and look at and, and reference in, in a way that will help us be able to, to really shout out some of the great work that's being done and really be able to see that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on this?
I would, I would like for the school committee to consider approving it so that I could then give it to the leaders in the buildings and they could use this as their springboard for their school improvement plans.
If there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2022 to 2023 district strategic plan as presented tonight.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Thank you to all of you who worked very hard on this plan. Looking forward to seeing your data because we love data. The next item on the agenda, also under old business, is the approval of the 2022 to 2023 Webster Middle School Student Handbook Revision.
All right. Okay. Okay. I wasn't sure. I didn't want to take away from making sure everybody was good.
Nope, that's okay. Go ahead, Ms. Perchran.
All right. So we are implementing the Yonder pouches. We had assemblies today with each of the classes and we rolled out the expectations that they will turn off their phone, put it in this pouch. They lock the pouch. They put it into their belongings, their backpack. They hold on to it for the day. And then we have bases with the teachers and they'll just unlock it at the end of the day, take out their phone and leave the pouch for the next day. The pouch belongs to them. They'll put their name on it and they'll get that same pouch back the next day. We, it was presented to school committee and approved. And this is more on adding it to our handbook and making sure that it's clear for them to understand the policy because we're rolling it out tomorrow with them trying it out for the first day. Seemed pretty positive as it was rolled out today. We're just going to see in the morning how it goes. So it's more on the violations and what the expectation is. And the letter that went home to the parents shows some of the research of why we're doing it. And the 65% of schools saw an improvement in academic performance. 74% of schools saw an improvement in student behavior. And 83% of schools saw an improvement in student engagement in the classrooms just from being away from the phone and the distraction. So that is why we implemented it. And going forward, we just need to be able to put this into our handbook so that it can be incorporated for parents and students. Any questions or anything I can try to answer?
To the chair. Do we have the replacement cost as one of the bags?
So the bags, they have free replacements up to, for, so they get replaced up to, and the number was, I think, 60% of them. For, so if you damage them or if you forget them or if you rip them apart or anything, then they'll give us, Yonder will give us free bags for replacements. And I believe it was 60%, but don't quote me on that because I was not able to attend that meeting. But I believe that was the number he gave me this morning, Matt gave me this morning.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? I guess my only question, shockingly, would be data-related. So is there a way for us to gather some data? Is there any data currently around cellphone usage within Webster Middle School?
This year, I know that we don't have the hard data, data that's around it. We have no incidences to report because none of them have come to a sense of you wouldn't give the phone up when you were asked. So right now, our policy is it's often in your bag. If we see it, we'll take it. And the first time, we'll give it back to you. The second time, we'll call a parent in. And we have not gotten to that point that it's been incident that has been reportable. So, but we see them out and I know they're getting to be. And that's why, but last year, I know that the data was greater and that's why this came about and presented.
So we do have data from last year, though? That's great.
We do.
Okay.
We do. And that's why Ms. Peterson started this project.
So it'll be great to have some, some data, you know, maybe mid-year because obviously we're just implementing it now. So we'll have one quarter under our belts by mid-year and then end of year as well.
Yes.
Just to see what the impact is. Great. Any other questions? Well, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2022 to 2023 Webster Middle School hand, student handbook revision.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. The next item on the agenda under new business is the review and approval of the capital plan.
Thank you. In your packet, you should have a copy of the capital plan. It has been, at our last meeting, I discussed the town account, the town manager, who's helped process and address the budget for the budget season and overall plan. So what I did is I put together our plan update previously. I did not add anything to Bartlett this year, but no cost for that since we're a project. Our gas is new, so we don't have any capital expenses for that. So the only items on there are for Webster Middle School. And, you know, some of these projections were old projections. So I believe, just going by the market, I, because they're probably loaded again. So for Google, I will send them to try and get an overall.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the 2022 to 2023 capital plan.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for putting this together. It's good to be planning ahead. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the three-year rubbish removal contract.
Yeah, we can. So our rubbish contract is up this year. We have used fat trucking for, this is one of the items that I do not actually care out for. Because we have seen, I'll ask you, real concerns in the operation. I don't have to tell you, look online or watch TV, areas that are struggling with rubbish, lack of, the lack of rubbish removal. And we have not suffered any of that across our schools. Very concerned service. They give a lot of pride in their service. With Aaron Pratt, we talked about contract. And we, we did do a three-year contract. She was at eight years. Because their bids are up and down and they're going to have to call today. And there are some real concerns. Costs and all things are so high right now. But we agreed that, again, 4% unknown, 5%.
Thank you, Ms. Pranchely. Any questions from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the three-year rubbish removal contract.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
From the office.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Thank you for your time and effort on that. The next item on the agenda is the review, transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll and vouchers. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.